Good evening. I'd like to call this regular City of Milton meeting to order and if Mr. Reginald Simmons from St. Aden's Episcopal Church will give us an invocation.
Good evening. The Lord be with you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, in your word, you have given us a vision of that holy city to which the nations of the world bring their glory. Behold and visit, we pray, the cities of the earth renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Send us honest, able leaders. Enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression, that peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order, and that men and women from different cultures and with differing talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity through Jesus Christ our Lord, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen.
Thank you. I would like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, November 4th, 2019 to order. The city strongly recommends that you review tonight's agenda carefully, and if you wish to speak on any item on the agenda, please bring your comment cards to the clerk as soon as possible. While the Milton rules allow a speaker to turn in their comment card up until the clerk calls the agenda item, once the agenda item is called, no more comment cards can be accepted. And before I turn it over to Sudi, I'd like to say welcome back. You know, thank you. We have missed your voice up here. Okay. And the mayor is running a few minutes late, but he should be here shortly.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the November 4th, 2019 regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to make a public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on that item. Your comment card must be presented to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. All speakers, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you are representing an organization, an affidavit is required stating that you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Please review tonight's agenda, and if you would like to make a comment, please bring your comment card to me. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood's on his way. Councilmember Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Kuntz.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Carol Cookerly.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
And Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
Tonight, we are honored to have the sons of the American Revolution lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would everyone please rise?
Ready, off. To the right, face, and salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. To the left, face, to the front, march.
Sudi, will you please call the next item?
Our next item this evening is approval of the meeting agenda, Agenda Item Number 19238.
I'd like to add an executive session to discuss pending litigation. Do you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as read and with the addition of an executive session.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That's unanimous. Sudi, do we have any public comment?
We do. We have two, sir.
Okay. The next item is general public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and the city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Please remember that this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes for remarks. The city encourages you right now to review the agenda, and if you wish to speak, to bring your comment cards to the clerk right now.
Our first speaker is Mr. Bill Lusk.
Good evening, Council. Ms. Gordon, Stacy, City Manager Steve, Ken, pleasure to be back in front of you. My name is W.C. Lusk. I reside at 1355 Summit Road, Milton, 3 Triple Lot 4. And I come before you tonight as president of the Milton Historical Society. And with me are Mr. Bob Myers, James Ferris, and James's wife Linda, and Kathy Beck. Side note here, James and Kathy own the old Tucker Homestead up on Freemanville Road, which bears an historical marker that you all approved a couple of years ago. And I come here tonight to speak about a potential issue out there, having known the history of what's gone on in the city over the last 22 years or so since I've been here, and that's the loss of historical structures. And I've sent each one of you a copy of the letter pertaining to a potential or potential situation. And just for the record, I'd like to read this into the record. And this concerns the property at 14620 Freemanville Road, which is 12 acres. It's parcel, Fulton County Parcel Number 22442006710238. It's the 12 acres that the city is currently considering purchasing off of Freemanville Road. And the letter goes as follows. Mayor and council members, it is public knowledge that the above-mentioned property is being considered for purchase by the city as funded by the Greenspace Bond. As you are aware, there is located on that property a barn which is situated near the Freemanville Road right-of-way. We, as members of the Milton Historical Society, are interested in the preservation of that barn, along with other historic structures in the city. As a point of information, that barn is featured in the book Barns of Old Milton County, pages 72 through 74, as authored by our own board member, Mr. Bob Myers. Preservation of historic structures has precedence in Milton, as well as surrounding cities of Alpharetta, Roswell, and Johns Creek. In 2008, the city of Milton purchased the Thomas Byrd Jr. House on Hopewell Road. It is one of the two oldest houses in North Fulton County, dating from the 1840s. It is being used by Fulton Senior Services. Roswell has a number of historic structures, including the Smith House, Bullock Hall, Hembry Farm, to name a few. Of course, Alpharetta is known for its Mansell House. Johns Creek, for instance, has a collection of structures at their park in Autry Mill. As in the Historical Society, our vision is to have a similar collection of structures in Milton, possibly beginning with this barn. As another example of a similar preservation closer to home, I'd point out the Dinsmore Barn on the Milton Library property. As members of the Friends of the Milton Library, of which several of us are members, we appeal to Fulton County to allow us to save the barn from demolition, salvage it, and reconstruct it on the library site. After the library was built, the county agreed. We did exactly that. It is now home to over 13,000 used books for sale. It has become a destination and service to the community while preserving an icon from the past. In times past, Milton, in Milton, historic structures like this barn and others have disappeared in the dark of night, despite regulations that require review by Milton Zone Design Review Board. As a city that promotes itself as having rural character, we believe that it is incumbent on it to adhere to that image. Therefore, we appeal to the city to preserve that barn and possibly relocating it on that site. We are available to consider plans for it as the purchase of the property moves forward. As with the Dinsmore Barn, we also offer our services to help preserve and relocate it. We look forward to having that discussion. And maybe it's another comments. I'd like to have Bob Myers add a few comments to what I have said. All right, Bob?
Thank you, Bill. My name is Bob Myers. I live at 230 Hidden Meadow Drive in Crab Apple, in Alpharetta. I moved from Milton to Alpharetta, but only part of me moved. My heart stayed here. In July 2012, more than seven years ago, I appeared before the city council to encourage efforts to preserve in some way the two barns that had existed for many years on the Dinsmore property at the corner of Mayfield and Charlotte Roads, where our beautiful new library was constructed, was to be built. I sought to encourage a discussion about the importance of preserving our historical past for us and for future generations. Working together, the city, the county, and local citizens came up with a plan. In that case, the barns were preserved in a unique way by incorporating their precious siding into a new barn, a replica of one of the original structures, which today serves the people of Milton as the location of the Friends of the Milton Library book sales that Bill alluded to. Proceeds from the sale benefit library programs. I venture to say that the Milton Library is one of the few, if not the only, library with its own barn. I'd like to continue that discussion, starting here tonight. This time, it concerns this small red barn on Freemanville Road, and just as before, the potential for this historic barn is limitless. Like the Dinsmore barns, this barn is featured in the barns of the old Milton County, and it will soon belong to the city of Milton because it sits on the Kennedy property, which the city is in the process of acquiring. The title of the chapter about that barn is "Good Things Come in Small Packages." The barn measures only 16 feet long by 18 feet wide. A lean-to on the right side adds 12 feet to the length, and another adds eight feet to the width. The ceiling of the central part of the barn is only seven feet above the dirt floor. The siding is rough-cut lumber from the nearby now-defunct Dinsmore lumber mill on Red Road. The barn was once part of several barns and other outbuildings built by Oscar Nix, who died in 1976, and the previous owner, Lon McCleskey, who died in 1961 on a 100-acre farm. The Little Red Barn is the only structure still remaining. It would be a shame to lose it. There are a number of potential uses for this unique part of our history. Because of its size, it could be repurposed to become a teaching center for schoolchildren. It could become part of a historic park. It could remain in place, or it could be moved. It will require some refurbishing and certainly a coat of fresh paint. So I say, I suggest that we have a discussion. Let's agree to keep a valuable piece of Milton's history. If we allow it to be destroyed, we will all lose something dear. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any more public comment?
That's all, sir.
Sudi, glad to have you back.
Thank you.
All right. If we can move on to consent agenda?
This evening, our first item is approval of the October 7th, 2019 city council meeting minutes, Agenda Item Number 19239. Next is approval of a Parks and Recreation Department Facility use agreement between the city of Milton and Rhythm &amp; Shoes, Agenda Item Number 19240. Next, approval of a change order, Number 1, for a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Tenell Spangler and Associates, Inc., for preparation of the Unified Development Code, Agenda Item Number 19241. Approval of a lighting services agreement between Georgia Power and the city of Milton to provide street lighting for Charlotte Drive and Mayfield Road, Agenda Item Number 19242. Our fifth consent agenda item is approval of change order Number 1 to the professional services agreement with TriStem LTD for an extension of the existing agreement to allow adequate time for completion of the research, Agenda Item Number 19243. Our sixth and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of the following subdivision plats and revisions. Crab Apple Ventures Land Lots 888, 13721, 13723, and 13725 on Providence Road, minor plat to create three lots, 6.258 total acres, 0.47 lots per acre. Next is RL Aglosen Land Lots 304, 345, 310, 320, and 330 on Hickory Flat Road, 390 Hickory Pass. This is a minor plat to create four large lots, 21.929 total acres, 0.18 lots per acre, Agenda Item Number 19244.
Okay. Do I have a motion and a second on consent agenda?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as read.
Second.
Okay. We've got a motion from Councilmember Kuntz with a second from Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Sudi. Okay. We'll move on to our reports and presentations. Sudi, if you'll please call the first item.
Our first item this evening is a proclamation recognizing Veterans Day 2019. This is being presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
As always, this is an honor to present this proclamation. I have before me a proclamation titled Veterans Day 2019. Whereas, it has long been our custom to commemorate November 11th, the anniversary of the ending of World War I, by paying tribute to the heroes of the tragic struggle and by redirecting ourselves to the cause of peace. And whereas, in the intervening years, the United States has been involved in several other great military conflicts, which have added millions of veterans, living and dead, to the honor rolls of this nation. And whereas, the Congress passed a concurrent resolution on June 4th, 1926, calling for the observance of November 11th with appropriate ceremonies, and later provided in an act approved on May 13th, 1938, that the 11th of November should be a legal holiday and should be known as Armistice Day. And whereas, in order to expand the significance of that commemoration, and in order that a grateful nation might pay appropriate homage to the veterans of all its wars who have contributed so much to the preservation of this nation, the Congress, by an act approved on June 1st, 1954, changed the name of this holiday to Veterans Day. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the city of Milton, hereby call upon all of our citizens to observe November 11th, 2019, as Veterans Day. On that day, let us solemnly remember the sacrifices of all those who fought so valiantly on the seas, in the air, and on foreign shores, to preserve our heritage and freedom. And let us consecrate ourselves to the task of promoting and enduring peace, so that their efforts shall not have been in vain. And this is given under my hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia, on the fourth day of November 2019. And I'd like to ask the council to join me in presenting this proclamation and to any and all veterans that are here with us tonight.
(applause)
Yeah, we could either do in between, or some, yeah, that would probably be the easiest. Council, do you want to go behind? Thank you. Please go behind.
Yes, please.
As close as you can get to the table. I know it's a little awkward. All right. Three, two, one. Thank you. Thank you all for your service.
Thank you all for, uh, gentlemen, it's a pleasure to have you here tonight. Thank you very much. Thank you for your service.
Busy, busy. Hi, yes, good to see you. Thank you for your service. My dad was in there too, I know.
You guys will bear with me for one minute. All right, Sudi, if you would please call the next presentation item.
Our next item is a proclamation recognizing Native American History Month. This is being presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay, and it's also my honor tonight to present this proclamation for a title Native American History Month. Whereas, the Americans we know as American Indians and Native Americans were the first explorers and settlers of the areas that now make up the United States. And whereas, mountains and rivers, lakes and valleys, states and counties, trails and towns across this land have Indian names. They are lasting reminders of the presence and the significance of American Indians, not just in our geography, but throughout the whole of American history. And whereas, many of the foods we eat and the medicines and the remedies we use were introduced by Indians, and more than one highway follows an Indian trail. And whereas, Indians make contributions in every area of endeavor in American life, and our literature and all our arts draw upon Indian themes and wisdom. And whereas, countless American Indians have served in our armed forces and have fought valiantly for our country. And whereas, during the Thanksgiving season, generations of Americans are reminded of the early friendship of the pilgrims and the American Indians. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the City of Milton, hereby dictate and proclaim November as Native American History Month in the City of Milton, Georgia, and this is given under my hand and the seal of the City of Milton, Georgia, on the fourth, this fourth day of November 2019. And again, if I could ask the council and any representatives here tonight to join us for this proclamation.
Oh, you are?
Yeah. Always here. He made a mistake and didn't call us.
No, he said he needs veterans.
Right. Yeah.
If we have, if Councilman Coontz could get maybe behind this lady in the red coat, or kind of in between, there we go. Just the taller of y'all in the back. That should fit. Thank you. Yep, that fits. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. All right, Sudi, if you'd please call the next item.
Next item is Cox Road Property Partnership Opportunities, Mr. Jim Craig.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The agenda says opportunities. I'm only going to talk about one opportunity here. The purpose of my presentation here is to present to you all an opportunity that we have discovered as a result of our intended acquisition of 170 Cox Road, formerly known as the Soccer Barn. So let me start by just explaining a little bit of what we're looking at here, and if you'll refer to your document camera, your drawing. This is the property that we are currently doing diligence on. The entrance is right here at the, right as you turn off of our old Cox Road. This is in the City of Milton. This space here, this next parcel over here, is the Porter Academy. This is in Roswell, borderline right here. The entrance to their facility is here. Now, the folks at the Porter Academy gave me some of the history. They've been there since the year 2000. In that time, this property, the Soccer Barn, has been owned by three and potentially now a fourth different property owner. Originally, the YMCA and Wall-to-Wall Sports, United Football Academy, and now the City of Milton, hopefully. In that time, with each of the three previous property owners, they have had a reciprocal agreement. The agreement is this: During the school day, their school gets done by about 2:30, the Porter Academy is allowed to use the fields for the purposes of outdoor recreation gym, uh, PE classes. In exchange, during, once the school is closed, the Soccer Barn and its other various owners have been allowed to use their back parking lot and also, right at this point here, there is an, there is an actual entrance between the two properties. And they've actually encouraged previous owners to encourage people to enter and exit through their driveway instead of the one on the Soccer Complex due to this, how close it is to Cox Road. When they saw the paper that we were, you know, interested in acquiring it, they were most anxious to meet with us, and I happened to just knock on their door a day later and said, hey, I'm potentially your neighbor. They are very much interested in continuing this relationship. I've spoken with City Attorney Gerard, and he has indicated that it is possible to move forward with something, some type of relationship, but being a municipality, we would have to have some type of documentation to formalize that event, that activity. And so, the purpose here is to ask, should I continue with this particular opportunity, or should we let it go?
Any questions on this, comments? Matt?
And Jim, we do these types of relationships with other, you know, facilities as far as time use and things like that. I don't see a problem with it in my mind, so.
Anybody else?
Ken.
Sir.
Is there any lib, I mean, obviously, there's liability in just about everything the city does.
Right.
But if we grant access to fields that the city owns to a private organization, how do we indemnify ourselves from?
We will draft that into the contract, first of all, and then we'll also be requiring the contract to be named as additional insurers with respect to policies of insurance. We'll request that they send us specific binders of insurance naming the City of Milton as an insured under their policy. We can paper it very effectively such that the risk of liability is almost nil.
Okay.
I'm assuming we actually need that parking, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you all for your time. I'll talk in a minute.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, tonight, we don't have any items on the first presentation, so we'll move on to our public hearing. Sudi, if you'll please sound that item.
This is for an alcohol beverage license application, consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to French Gourmet Bistro 5310 Windward Parkway Suite E, Milton, Georgia 3004, Agenda Item Number 19245, Ms. Bernadette Harville.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. French Gourmet Bistro, the applicant this evening already has distilled spirits and malt beverages, I'm sorry, they already have wine and malt beverages. They are applying for the consumption on premises of distilled spirits. They have met all the requirements, and staff recommends approval.
Okay. Any questions? All right, I'll open up for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 19-245.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Morick with a second from Councilmember Coontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bernadette. Okay, well, you don't have any items under our zoning agenda tonight, so we'll move on to unfinished business. Sudi, if you'll please sound the item.
This item is consideration of an ordinance amendment to the City of Milton's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 32, Article 2, Offenses Against Public Peace, Order, and Morals, Agenda Item Number 19231. First presentation was at the October 21 city council meeting. Chief Rich Austin.
Greetings, Mayor, members of council. Recently, the PD learned of gaps within the state trespassing law that keeps it from being completely effective, especially given our unique rule nature. By enacting a trespassing component to our existing disorderly conduct ordinance, citizens would then have more control in regulating who may or may not come on to their property.
Okay. Any questions on that? Matt?
I'll just make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 19-231.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Coontz with a second. That motion from Councilmember Jamison. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
We'll move on to new business. Sudi, if you'll please call the new business item.
This is consideration of a resolution of the City of Milton authorizing a pre-application for a recreational trails program grant with the Department of Natural Resources, Agenda Item Number 19246, Mr. Jim Craig.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. What we have before you is, we're asking your support of our submitting an application to the Georgia Department of Natural Resources for the Recreation Trail Program Grant. You may recall that we did this two years ago, and we were successfully awarded $200,000, which we are working on right now to work on some trails at Providence Park. This requires a match of at least $50,000. So what the resolution basically is stating is that you're aware that the staff is submitting the grant and that you agree that we have the $50,000 to meet our match.
Okay, do you have any questions on that? Comments? Sounds like a good plan. I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 19-246.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Coontz for approval with a second by Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Jim. All right, we'll move on. Got one more new business item. Sudi, if you'll please call that item out.
This item is consideration of a resolution updating the City of Milton's funding authorization for the 2019 Georgia Smart Communities Challenge Grant Program and authorizing execution of two related grant agreements, Agenda Item Number 19247, Ms. Michelle McIntosh Ross.
Okay, good evening. Yes, so these agreements are for the acceptance of the Georgia Smart Communities Program Grant through Georgia Tech. Milton was one of four communities in the state of Georgia to win this opportunity to develop and test smart technology to improve livability in cities. As you remember, Mayor, you and Stacy and Parag and I went down to Macon back in June to, for the award announcement of this grant opportunity. Then on September 5th, earlier this year, we, our department staff and I, along with our Georgia Tech professors, Dr. Watkins and Dr. Gwynn, went down to present at the Georgia Tech Research Center about our project. A little bit about our project, it's technology-enabled, safer routes to schools is what we're calling it. It's to develop a mobile app to help arrange, to help organize parents and kids to form and schedule what we're calling walking school buses. So you would have a trail of kids walking to school, similar to a bus, but you'll be walking, which would promote walking to school in the Crab Apple area. Now, this project is to be a pilot project, so we're hoping that what we developed in our mobile app can be replicated throughout the school district and throughout, throughout the state, and perhaps the state of Georgia can implement some of this in their Safe Routes to Schools program. We'll see, right? So here we have this agreement. We have two agreements, is with Georgia Tech and also with the Atlanta Regional Commission to accept this grant. If you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions? Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 19-247.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second by Councilmember Coontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, we'll move on to reports. I'll make sure everyone knows about our Veterans Day, this Saturday at 8 o'clock, breakfast and program here, so hope to see everybody, everybody here for that. Anything anybody on the council needs to report, something on? Matt?
I do, yeah. And I got an email last week from Ron Redner, who actually happened to be here, and I sent a message to Steve. I guess the Sons of the American Revolution chapter are honoring the 250th anniversary of the American Revolution, and they're planting elm trees, liberty trees, in the area, and they would like to plant one in front of Milton City Hall with the help of our city council members. And I sent a message to Steve. I didn't know how long this would take, if it would take several months, whatever. He said they actually have the tree in hand, so I didn't know that. So if it's something that we need to move on, we might want to think about moving on that, but anyway, there's an opportunity to have a liberty tree planted here at City Hall if the council's amenable to it. Up to you guys, but maybe give staff direction to look at that. Obviously, Gwynn.
Yeah, I talked to him on the way out, so that'd be good.
Okay.
Good deal. Everybody good with that?
If it's all right with the council, I'm just going to ask staff to take a look. They have some type of tree schematic out there, just to figure out the best placement and things along those lines, and...
Good evening. Yes, so these agreements are for the acceptance of the Georgia Smart Communities Program Grant through Georgia Tech. Milton was one of four communities in the state of Georgia to win this opportunity to develop and test smart technology to improve livability in cities. As you remember, Mayor, you and Stacy and Parag and I went down to Macon back in June to, for the award announcement of this grant opportunity. Then on September 5th earlier this year, we, Department Staff and I, along with our Georgia Tech professors, Dr. Watkins and Dr. Gwynn, went down to present at the Georgia Tech Research Center about our project. A little bit about our project, it's technology-enabled, safer routes to schools is what we're calling it. It's to develop a mobile app to help arrange, to help organize parents and kids to form and schedule what we're calling walking school buses. So you would have a trail of kids walking to school similar to a bus, but you'll be walking, which would promote walking to school in the Crab Apple area. Now, this project is to be a pilot project, so we're hoping that what we developed in our mobile app can be replicated throughout the school district and throughout, throughout the state, and perhaps the state of Georgia can implement some of this in their Safe Routes to Schools program. We'll see, right? So here we have this agreement. We have two agreements, is with Georgia Tech and also with the Atlanta Regional Commission to accept this grant. If you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions? Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 19-247.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second by Councilmember Coons. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Great, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to reports. I'll make sure everyone knows about our Veterans Day this Saturday at 8:00, breakfast and program here, so hope to see everybody, everybody here for that. Anything anybody on the council needs to report something on? Matt?
I do, yeah. And I got an email last week from Ron Redner, who actually happened to be here, and I sent a message to Steve. I guess the Sons of the American Revolution chapter are honoring the 250th anniversary of the American Revolution, and they're planting elm trees, liberty trees, in the area, and they would like to plant one in front of Milton City Hall with the help of our city council members. And I sent a message to Steve. I didn't know how long this would take, if it would take several months, whatever. He said they actually have the tree in hand, so I didn't know that. So if it's something that we need to move on, we might want to think about moving on that. But anyway, there's an opportunity to have a liberty tree planted here at City Hall if the council's amenable to it. Up to you guys, but maybe give staff direction to look at that. Obviously, Gwynn.
Yeah, I talked to him on the way out, so that'd be good.
Okay.
Good deal. Everybody good with that?
If it's all right with the council, I'm just going to ask staff to take a look. They have some type of tree schematic out there, just to figure out the best placement and things along those lines, and the best placement for the likelihood of survival.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
We can, thank you, Matt, move on to staff updates, starting with Public Works. Just want to thank Robert. How long have you been here? 90 days yet? Every pothole is fixed, and all the traffic's gone, everything, right?
Yes.
Actually, 90 days will be tomorrow.
Wow.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I actually have a display this time. Real quickly, I want to go over a couple of projects. I know you're very familiar with each one of them, and you probably already know the current status, but I just want to touch on those just a little bit. First project on your screen is actually a program. It's our pavement management program. I've updated you on this before. All of our roads, all of City Milton roads are being evaluated for a pavement condition index to update the pavement conditions. And from that study, they'll actually develop a capital improvement program for our road improvements and road resurfacing. That program right now, the road's been evaluated, but staff is doing the QC on it. We've noted a few discrepancies, and we're just kind of back and forth with the consultant. That, that study should be complete here within the next 30 days, I would hope. Also on the list is in conceptual and study state, stage, is the Morris Road Widening Project, and the State 148 Green Road Intersection Improvements, and the Birmingham Road Middle Bridge Project. By the way, these projects are the T-Splus projects. There'll be one that is not, but these are T-Splus projects. Those conceptual study plans are moving ahead, and of course, from that point, they'll go into a preliminary design stage and into final design. There will be some, likely be some right-of-way acquisitions also for those projects. In the preliminary design stage, the Birmingham Crossroads Project, that's actually not a T-Splus project. That's being handled by and through the Georgia Department of Transportation, and they're trying to keep us updated and informed for the most part. We do know that they are going to be putting out a public informational meeting, and we're expecting that to be after the first of the year. Location to be at Tyrone, and of course, the, the time. But we'll keep you posted on that, and they will review their preliminary plans at that informational meeting. Also in preliminary design is the Freemanville at Birmingham intersection, and it's actually nearer to final design at this point. Under final design and right-of-way acquisition, as you know, we've got those four projects, the Hopewell at Hanby, Hopewell at Thompson, and the Hopewell at Bethany, Bethany Bend Intersections, and the Cogburn Sidewalks. We know we have some acquisitions yet to do there, but I will tell you, the Hopewell at Hanby and the Hopewell at Thompson should be out to bid spring of next year, and the Hopewell at Bethany and the Cogburn Sidewalk should follow in summer, be out to bid for summer of next year. I know those are much-needed projects. And of course, you know, construction is the Northeast Crab Apple Project, and it's moving right along. I do want to inform you that there will be a lane shift in the next week or so. They're going to be putting some asphalt down to get around, so they can actually build the roundabout itself. So it will be a congestion. Bear with us, they'll move through it really quickly, and anticipated construction, pending weather, of course, should be late April, we're hoping late April of this year, next year, excuse me. And of course, the completed projects, I know you're very familiar with those, and we're proud of those projects. I will say the Freemanville Providence Roundabout, the landscaping should have started today. So it'd take a couple of days for that landscaping to get in, but the timing is right to do that. Any questions on those projects?
Rick?
Robert, the Morris Road Widening, is that just the section between Webb and Bethany Bend McGinnis Ferry intersection? Are we, are we looking at doing anything beyond that where McGinnis Ferry feeds out to where it crosses Georgia 400? Because I know GDOT is talking about putting in an intersection there on ramp at McGinnis Ferry. I'm just wondering, is that separate? Is that GDOT looking at that, or is that something we're doing in addition to the Morris widening?
Well, in conjunction with Forsyth County, because we know they're coming out of the 400 interchange.
Right.
We'll tie into that.
Okay.
It'll, it'll match our widening for Morris Road. So it'll, it'll be, it'll continue on from the new interchange all the way through into, into the new circle.
Do we, do we have an idea when they're, when they're looking at doing that interchange? Do we have any update on that from GDOT, or?
Can we get back to you with that information?
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Any other questions on these projects? All right, real briefly, just to give you an update, I know you like to hear about the work orders. We had a total of 150 work orders for the month of October, and of those work orders, I will tell you, we had 30 dead animals, more than I've had since I've been here. It's just been very popular. We had 23 sign issues, 16 potholes, 11 debris removals, eight tree issues, seven traffic signal issues, and some stormwater issues. We issued nine right-of-way encroachment permits, and of those nine, two of those were driveways. So, any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate it. All right, our next will be fire with Chief Edgar.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of programs' updates. We completed our promotional assessments for FAO and Captain last week, so we've created an eligibility list for promotion. Our SER program is well underway. We've got 16 participants in this class here. They're about halfway through at this point. And we're preparing for Pancakes with Santa, so hope to see you all there on December 7th at 8:00 AM. And also, a save the date for our awards banquet. We've, we're able to nail that down to February 1st, and we will be at the Manor Country Club. They offered their, their venue to us, so we took advantage of that opportunity, so. The two new fire trucks have been complete, completed, and they've been transferred, transferred from Wisconsin down to Forsyth, Georgia, where they're putting all the equipment on there, and then they will be brought back here, where we will then schedule our push-in ceremony. So we're looking forward to that. And today, we started our behavioral health workshop for all our firefighters, since suicide rates are much higher in public safety and first responders than the general public. And in 2018, for the fifth year in a row, the suicide rate for first responders or firefighters was greater than the line-of-duty deaths than the previous year. So, and in 2019, we've already had 73 firefighter suicides opposed to 32 line-of-duty deaths. So there is truly a, an issue out there for first responders with everything they go through and see every day. As it was explained today, it's like putting a marble in a backpack. Every event, everything you see just creates that load, and it gets heavier and heavier. So we're doing our best to take care of our firefighters and making sure that they get the tools and the skills they need to recognize some of the issues that they may be dealing with, and how to help others within their, you know, within the stations and all, so. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and I believe we added a, an executive session to discuss pending litigation or active litigation. Do I have a motion to move into executive session?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to move into executive session to discuss litigation. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.[1116.62] That's unanimous.